Yes. Go ahead and get started with the workshop. Tonight's focus is capital budget. Vika has given us an initial budget. Vika, you want to make a few comments about the numbers you have in for the 2026 budget in that column?
Yeah, so with the numbers that are put in here to start out with, it's very rough estimates tomorrow. Let's start a discussion. The dollars that I put into the accounts that have anything in them are either relevant to what's been consistently or fairly consistently put in in previous years or specific requests based on an anticipated purchase, like with the fire, with the public works department, the gray pickup truck that needed to be gone and finally had its last leg disappear. And so the town is looking into purchasing a new vehicle in the next fiscal year. That would be a pickup truck with hopefully a plow attachment that fire department can use when they need and public works can use when they need. And so it could be a shared vehicle. So that's an example of an expense that's anticipated that hopefully could be moved forward. There is one big mistake that I missed that I thought I had corrected the first time around, which there was a recommendation from Coastal Waters. You'll see on the notes it describes breaking down the dollar value as to what the Coastal Waters is recommending to be placed in the reserve accounts. And I made the mistake and left it at $95 instead of $95,000, which that has a change. The other thing that I did share with the board that I have not had a chance to discuss is with the fire department. So tomorrow I'm having department discussions with Harbor Master, Solidways Public Works, and Fire Department. So all of those discussions will take place with the preparation for the department discussion coming up. Tomorrow I'll get more feedback from Ralph relative to the document he had shared, I think it was a number of months ago, with either a couple of board members or somebody. And it made its way to me. I did not put in any of those recommendations in this particular discussion because I don't know the details of that. And I didn't feel comfortable putting that information in. And it's also very large numbers that are being requested. The one made in the fire department reserve account that has been going in the last couple of years is $50,000 towards the tank truck that I knew needed to be replaced. I'm not familiar of the schedule of the other ones. And so I'm assuming that maybe that number will change in some ways relative to what the fire department recommends in hopes of support to move forward.
On the capital side or?
On the capital. Yeah, all of this is relative to the capital. The expense side budget has not been touched since the last discussion. And then the only other change that was made in here is in the revenue. I did add under, I added a new account in terms of revenue with what the anticipated revenue is supposed to be relative to broadband payments from Axiom to offset the debt service. I have reached out to Mark Colette to try to get some things figured out in terms of when we'll start receiving payments and how we're going to catch up on the current year and the previous year. But I have not heard back from him yet.
What's the total amount that we bonded that theoretically would be getting?
$900,000, I think I believe it was in total. There was a, yeah, 700. There were, it ended up being two different bonds, but I think combined they're $900,000.
Ready?
Yes.
Any initial comments from anybody on the board?
I have a whole new appreciation for all of the work that needs to be done and has been done. And it's impressive. It's all amazing. All new appreciation.
Finance committee has met twice. Meeted again on Friday. And they're a very eager bunch to get some things squared away. So hopefully they'll be able to bring you forward some recommendations. But they're definitely, it shows they're putting some work into to try and get some assistance provided for.
Other comments from the board? Any ideas, suggestions on how we go through this line by line? We just start at the top. One suggestion I would have is that we pay special attention to those items that were at the top of the list of priorities out of the survey and out of the workshop. Another little detail I would add. The 2026 budget totals to 775 after correcting that 95 versus 95,000 deal. The total is 775,000. The 2025 capital budget, if I did this correctly, came in at 552,500. So the numbers that we have in here for '26 for capital only are up by 40% from last year. Not complaining, just reference point.
What does the 2026 total amount?
775. And last year was 552,500. Any comments from the public on capital? Before we get to the line by line? Any general thoughts? Anybody on the finance committee have anything to offer? We'd kind of like to make this as informal as we can. That's okay with you, because a lot of horse color.
Yeah, I mean, that's fine. It's really the first discussion in terms of this, the numbers that are in here. You know, stonework, I put in $300,000 only simply because last year there was $270,000. So I really, we're going into these numbers was making sure that some of the bigger items were still as heavy, especially going into some of the work that some work may be experiencing. But majority of these numbers are not set numbers. And, you know, as far as some of them, like grant matching fund, it's $30,000 versus $20,000. No good reason other than hopefully we're going to keep getting more grants. And we are increasingly having more and more matches that we need to do, which is in some ways great if we're able to use that account and have that account build up versus, you know, having to take out $75,000 out of capital reserve from the stonework, you know, when it could be taken out of the 14th or whatever, out of the grant matching. So.
Nice, good question. Vika, does that, could that be used for the island fellow? Is that considered matching? So.
I don't think so, no. Because it's not, this is specific to grants. But I will give you the exact description.
Okay, because we need to make sure that's in here.
Perspective contingency fund use for town matching chair of public or private grant opportunities.
The other thing to consider, not sure the auditors would love us spending capital money on the personnel kind of expenses.
Got it.
Probably needs to be in the expenses. Sound like you, Vika?
I agree.
Thank you.
All right, any other thoughts, Mubai?
Yes, sir. I guess the thing that's always sort of bothered me about looking at the free output for capital work deserves is that you have to kind of look at the balances in the Machias sheet, you know, to see what's in there. Like the $62,000 in the grant matching reserve account right now, but you don't know that unless you go look at the inventory.
I predict your problem will be solved in two shakes. Are you still HF, the SME main? That's still your address?
HFM, SME main.
HFM and SME main?
Yeah.
I've got a spreadsheet to combine too and show us the balances. Because I had the same issue. I get tired of going back and forth and always making mistakes.
Well, you just don't have much context for what you put in there, except what you had, what you put in there last year. But you don't know what your target is. You don't know what kosher order your target is and I don't know what you have target.
And to some degree, I might suggest that it would be great if we were having this conversation after the finance committee had some time to.
They need to hear what you know, what you don't know.
Ah, that won't take long. Very short.
We're going to start with what they know.
John, I copied you on that spreadsheet as well. So you should have it now. Yes, sir.
Related to the Machias sheet, have all the deposits been made for 2025?
They have. Yeah, but not all withdrawals have been made. And so that's something like for the coastal, no, I'm sorry, the storm damage repair and restore, we are anticipating as of now $49,000 to be withdrawn out of that account. And that is due to the select board having made motions. So the work that is being done at East Shore Drive, the work that is going to be done at the hook, this account used to be called the Indian Point Retaining Wall. And so it was changed last year with the idea that it would be a storm damage repair and restoration account. But because of the changes that took place at the hook and the road being, the parking areas being relocated, that was kind of one of the points of being able to use that money for that. And then the visibility study that the first meeting for that took place today relative to South Shore Drive. So there are, there are, I still anticipate maybe one, I didn't have a chance to check today, one small deduction to come out of the grant matching funds. So there are a couple of accounts that still need.
But not big numbers.
Not, no. The largest anticipated withdrawal that we're waiting for at this point, last month came out the school bus for the school reserve account. And then we are waiting for the 20, I believe it's $25,000 for the South Shore Drive work with GEI. So that's the largest number. So roughly $50,000 is still expected to be done.
Okay, well, with that, why don't we go ahead and start at the top and just kind of work our way through. If there's too much detail, please sing out. If there's not enough detail, please yell. And don't wait for a request for public comment. If you've got something, just sing out and raise your hand and throw something, please. It's a workshop, not a meeting. So dredging, dredging, we're waiting to hear from the feds relative to deaggression remediation. Do we need to put more money in? We might have some extra money there, but we don't know. Is that accurate?
Yes, that is as accurate as we can get it at this point. It's taken far longer than anticipated. We can't really close out the final. The project isn't really technically considered closed at this point because of a couple of things. The last information we had was that they were able to come to some more agreeable terms in terms of payments for the damage claims that came in. And so it does look in like, at this point, it does look like the town's not going to meet anymore. Hopefully less, but there's no way of knowing until.
So we can't touch that 134K until we know more than we know now?
I would not recommend just because when, when the time comes and, you know, as far as Army Corps, they're aware that we have this money in the reserve account. And so, because I have asked them a couple of times if we can kind of make a payment to finalize like the work and everything. But, yeah, I wouldn't. Because if something happens and this money gets redirected to something else and then we get, you know, everything gets wrapped up and we're going to a special town meeting to try to find money elsewhere. So I would just leave it where it is for now.
Okay, good. Fire Pond, there's $5,000 in the reserve, nothing budgeted for this year. We don't know of any Fire Pond projects at this point, right?
I do not. I know that over the years Ralph had made nothing more than a comment of one money should be set aside and was reserved in that reserve account. But I don't have any other details than that. And it's never come up in specifics requests.
Stonework, big one is currently 900. I'm sorry. Should have done this up to 628,000. Ending balance, that's budget. So currently 628,000 in the ending balance. And proposed budget's 300, which would put us at just under a million. As Vika said, proposing to put 300 in. Put 270 in last time. If anybody wants to make a guess as to what the stone here is going to cost us, it's probably going to sound somewhere like six to 10 million at a minimum, guessing.
Are you talking about phase one? What phase are you talking about?
One, two.
One and two.
Phase one and two. If I was a gambling man, I'd bet no less than eight, hopefully no more than 12, hopefully more like eight. So there's some better money out there that's loosely committed to us, subject to optics.
It's not the.
The two earmarks.
And there is a match with that.
Yeah, we have to match for those.
And I think that's like looking at in the next fiscal year kind of what the anticipated cost would be because there's that potential as close, you know, as you can get at this point earmark, making sure that there's that money set aside. And this is, you know, for, with stonework, I think if I would consider this project slightly different than the other ones. And so you can assume what the grant match would be for those earmarks and put it in the grant matching. But I would just keep it in the stonework because if you do make the decision to, you know, in the next six months that paving and widening the road is the first option because everything else is going to take longer, at least you'll have the funds in there. But that's for you to decide as you see fit.
What are the amounts of the two earmarks? And when you say matching, that's the town is the matching? What are the amounts of the two earmarks?
About one million to about 800,000. One of them has a match and one of them doesn't, I believe.
And match are commonly above 25%.
We hope that we'll see more grant opportunities once we get going on and or once we achieve 30% design. Part of the expected contribution from a consultant would be helping us find those grants. And a lot of those conversations need to take place with DOT and RUM because most, if not all, of this money will funnel through them. They'll have some sort of control over it. But having, the more money we can show that we've put aside as a capital budgeting item, the more serious we look to those folks. And then obviously the rest of the money has to come from bonding, which is right now sitting at pretty high interest rates.
What, so we've been hearing about the earmarks. What is, do we have a timeline?
We don't want a timeline, frankly. We've got the earmarks.
With Collins and?
From Senator Collins' office and Representative Ingrid's office. In both cases, because of resiliency, but in both cases, the money is aimed at projects that are pretty close to 30% design, and we weren't. So it taking longer for the budget process to work its way through to some degree is working to our favor. We recently called both offices. Ingrid's office answered and said, you're still where you were before. It's still considered part of the budget. But until we get past the current budget impasse, nothing's moving. And Collins did not call back at that point. We're calling them both again. Mark, were you, did you have something?
I will.
Oh, okay, I thought you had your end up.
I'll go quickly if you don't mind.
Sure, do it.
I was just wondering, I realize that there's just numbers that we're trying to decide to put in or not. But when it comes to the Stonework Road itself, the sort of widening and paving, that are we considering that at some point part of a improvement project? And will the funding for that come out of the same part that we're talking about?
That's the approach we're trying to follow. Tying all three of those things together, having the concept of resiliency, storm exposures, all of those kind of things that are very hot topics these days for funding, make sure that all of our work, but also all of our verbiage includes those concepts.
The only reason I'm asking that question is it's part of our regular road system, but it's really the main access route. I think it can easily be defined and rationalized with that.
Last, last year, town warrant, the language Stonework Road was intentionally put into the Stonework Reserve Account description. So then it would be part of the overall project.
Thanks. John, where do we stand on a 30% design? Is that, do we have a contract with GEI to do that or?
So the contract was in draft form when I left a couple of weeks ago. And I'm not sure, I believe it has not yet moved beyond draft form. I think we're waiting until our first meeting in February to talk about that.
Yes, so where, it's GEI is the company. And so they provided a draft proposal to make sure that what the town needs were going to be, were going to properly reflected in that. We met with them. They are waiting for feedback back from, from the town. But the entire board hasn't been filled in on that. And so we are expecting something by this Friday from them that then we will share with the entire board. And then the entire board kind of cohesively can agree on the language. And then, so in some ways, it's a little bit backwards in terms of, you know, not having a full contract. But it's really to make it so then what's in the contract is what everyone agrees upon. And then from there on, the work will begin. And we do have a $75,000 grant that we received to cover majority of the costs, just like the previous work that was done with Westwood and Sampson was based on a $75,000 grant. This is too.
Who's, Ships and Harbor, is that what that was? Or was it resiliency?
I don't know, Herb's probably going to know better. I cannot give you the name of that one off the top of my head because I have officially confused all the grants.
What was the question?
The $75,000 grant that we just received for the Stonework.
Sure, I'm replying to that.
Sure, I think so, but I cannot confidently speak of grants at the moment.
How long a process is it to complete the 30% design?
The challenge we gave them, what we'd like to begin construction next winter. They coughed a little bit and said it's a good target. Permitting will be probably a long stake in the sand. And that permitting will be more or less difficult based on what it is we propose. And that variable of what it is that we propose, the different options that have been put out there also have dramatic impact on total cost. So bottom line, hopefully 30% design within nine months to a year. Construction policy soon thereafter, subject to permitting, DOT and funding.
They are also very aware, just like they are with Bennett's Cove and South Shore Drive, that something needs to be done more immediately than waiting for a 30% design and then processing through the steps. And so I, I think in the work, what the board is going to probably receive within this timeframe is a better framework of what can be done sooner than later in, as a, you know, phase one type of approach, even if it's doing signage or, you know, better work, better markings of where pedestrians go, things like that. So that's part of the discussion.
Conversely, we wouldn't want to dump a whole lot of money into dramatic improvements to the pavement because we're going to be raising it. It's just be buried as a mark. Board okay with the 300 in there for now for that item?
Yeah, we want to do that.
Well, and to some degree, that's what we circle back to. After the entire budget process, we go through. And at some point in time, we begin to develop a sense of what we've proposed would look like in terms of impact to taxpayers. And then we say, oh, we got to chop something. Or we say, well, maybe we can add a little bit more based on that second or third to final step in the process. Replace holder, 300 sounds like a good number.
And we don't yet know the cost of when it's, when we have the 30% design and then start getting estimates. We just don't have a good sense of that.
We'll be working on the next budget at that point.
Okay, oh, oh, good.
But we'll also have input from the capital committee in terms of some scenario planning relative to what's our appetite for bonding look like for the next 10 years and that kind of thing. Okay, moving on, barge ramps. We are currently sitting on 37, 725. Proposing to budget 20,000, same number we budgeted last year. That would bring us up to 57 in barge ramps. And question, Vika, if we were going to spend any money on improving our current barging situation, it would come out of that account, right?
That would be the account that I would recommend to the board. Because it's engineering, capital maintenance and construction slash reconstruction of barge ramps.
So in case you have forgotten, we do have new concrete sticks that were granted to us by the state, I believe, waiting to be delivered for the barge ramp, boat ramp down at Stone Pier. Those have been held up because of some logistical issues. But we have free ramps, we just need to get them out. We do have to pay to get them out.
And who installs?
And you've allocated something like $6,000 out of that account.
But it's still sitting in this, so that will make this number smaller when we spend it. Yeah, yeah.
And who's, who's doing that work?
Herb. I'm not going to let you see it.
I believe the arrangement is finding tractor-trailer trucks that would haul them down in two loads. Does that sound right there?
Whatever we can, they're thousands of pieces.
Yeah, and there's 30 of them, 26?
66.
66?
Are they the same ones that the?
33 by two, right?
The same ones that the boatyard received?
They might be made by the same people, but they're not getting, they bought them from Precast directly. I think Precast actually makes them for the state. Whatever we get, it might be the same thing. They might have gotten 12 footers and we sort of reserved 10 footers.
So it's two 10 footers put together.
And this will replace the entire surface of the ramp at the Stonework?
As, that's what's there now, is 66.
In pieces.
10 foot.
Two by 32. And have we come up with a plan for getting rid of the old ones?
No. Any ideas?
More. Sell them. No ideas. Okay, so 20,000, that would put us at 57 minus the six. So we're at 50 for barge ramps. We might later, as we learn more about our options for barging, we might decide later on to add. we might decide later on to add more money in there. Is everybody comfortable keeping it at that fifty-seven minus six number for now? Sound okay to you, Vika?
And then the barge ramps is funding that would only be used at the Stone Pier and at Bennett's? Is that correct?
It would be used at Bennett's. If we did something at Bennett's, that's where it would come from.
Right, so it's just those two locations. Got it. It's not a developed barge ramp, but it's a historic barge ramp that's been used.
Which one?
I said, the historic barge ramp area that's been used, so.
Yeah, got it.
Okay, great. Who along floats in gangways, ninety-five thousand? That's based on some detailed work and proposals that were put forth by Coastal Waters that you've all had a chance to look at. And it's spelled out in abbreviated fashion on the budget discussion document that Vika provided. Any comments on that on the board?
That is for Chandler's in the Stonewark and Cousins?
Not Cousins.
Not Cousins, because that's the?
Fifteen thousand for the north loads at Stonewark, fifty thousand for Chandler's piling replacement. That's our part of the work that's going to be done at Chandler's in the upcoming. So we own the pilings on the north side of that pier.
Where the floats are.
Did you get a chance to look at the report that was in the packet? Because there is a summary and the breakdown of where, what the suggestions are from Coastal Waters.
Right, thank you, yeah.
All right, ninety-five okay for that line?
Can I?
Yes, sir.
That project is not likely to happen this year. It's a year out, so you could wait on that.
Which project? The Chandler stuff?
The state is not going to touch that for a year.
Okay.
My understanding, you veered up, I think you did not.
What I heard was next winter.
Yeah, I thought they moved it back to next winter from the winter after that.
You may have better information.
Unless I'm right, even?
My understanding is that they're going to do the other islands first, or some of the other islands.
Yeah. I heard that it would be next winter, the earliest, which would still put us in?
Yeah, we still have to.
Yeah, in the fiscal year twenty-six.
So let's make it up, yes.
And just so you understand, three of those pilings are, hold the, they're float pilings. They hold the town floats in place.
The dolphins.
Yeah, yeah, they're just piles, yeah. And then six of them are alongside the main wharf, their ships to lay on. And Coastal Waters only thought those were worth doing if we ended up putting that hoist in. The hoist is not part of this. We've sort of suggested that that should be part of the state project, but we haven't put anything planned for it. It doesn't really fit in either one of those accounts, I think. You may differ on that. I even wonder if the piles on the wharf technically, they're not floats again, right?
Not floating, not ramp, yeah.
But I don't know how much we want to get about that.
But structurally, half of them are part of the float system.
They're, yeah.
So do we have that lift in capital anywhere?
No.
Do we have what?
That lift, does it show up in the capital budget anywhere?
No, no, it's just a recommendation to you guys to support it. And to, we are recommending that the town ask the state to make it part of their project when they do that project.
And ask the state to pay for it? I thought they already said they wouldn't pay for it.
They won't pay for it.
Okay, yeah. Which asks them to include the construction of it without paying the bill.
But without you weighing in on that and go ahead and requesting it, we didn't allocate any money. All we did was request.
Yeah, wasn't there also a?
Ship grant. Chris Mayo had suggested the town apply for a ship grant and felt fairly confident that the town would be able to receive funds to cover the cost of that expense by that.
And was that conversation with Chris, was that the cost of it at what the state estimated? Or was that the cost of it at what our fishermen estimated? Because those two numbers were dramatically?
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
I would suggest we put it in here as a discussion point so we don't lose track of it.
And our report states that that fifty thousand dollars is half the cost, assuming we will get a ship grant.
Wait, fifty thousand to fund the Chandler's piling?
Is that right? I think that's right. And that's what it says, unless I wrote it wrong.
I'm looking at the summary, I don't have that report open, but I didn't read it. So when you say the fifty thousand?
The report says to fund half of the Chandler's piling replacement, see email from Brian Keizer, ten thirty-one twenty-four.
So where the other half would come from?
But ship grant.
The ship grant.
And that would include?
She was talking about a ship grant for the lift.
This would include the cost, yes, so yes, and yeah, so this is fifty thousand dollars. The ship grant would cover the rest. And the combination of those two would be the cost for the replacement of the pilings and the lift.
I think the whole project is a hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay, so we've got fifty in here. We don't need to add more into our capital budget, but we do need to make sure we move forward in the conversation for the ship grant. Do we have anybody currently teed up to apply for that grant? Or the remaining amount of money that would fund the other half of the pilings plus the lift?
I would have to double check with Carol because I think she was trying to coordinate and get the individuals that were pushing for the project to be more involved in the process and taking on some of that, but that's the last?
And who are those individuals?
Any information that I heard.
Who are they?
Some kind of thing.
And do you know the deadline of the grant? Is it rolling or is it not?
It's rolling.
It is?
If you're going to apply for it.
Can you follow with Carol on that? Let the board know at our next meeting if we need more labor aimed at getting that hundred thousand dollars, it sounds like, is what we're going to apply for for the ship grant.
It's sorry, about half a hundred and fifty thousand, right?
We've got fifty in here.
Twenty-five if you do the hoist. And what I just said was, if we don't do the hoist, the six fender piles are in the, in the, the Coastal Waters Commission has said that the six fender piles only make sense if we have that hoist. I didn't say that, they said that. I agree.
I did, those, twenty-three years I've lived here, I've only seen one ship tied up there and it's sent. Not there.
Now, well, what's his name, does he, does he say his name's up there?
Lenny?
Who's that?
Could I have the one from where I have?
Yes, sir.
And to clarify, if I could ask her, was part of this recommendation to replace the pilings that are held falling, the floats that we own at Chandler?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, thank you. So we definitely have to do that. But the other ones, the ones that are along the pier itself, we only need to do that if in fact we decide to go forward with the lift and we get funding in some fashion for the lift.
Yeah, so here we have partly assumed that you're going to go forward with the hoist.
Yep.
So we're saying we've got to do the fender piles, but that's only if you really want to do the hoist for that. To make it slippery.
What's the lifespan of the hoist?
Depends on the property, I suppose.
It could be fifteen years, maybe twenty-five years could be long.
And we all maintain it, be right by it, be managed.
Harbor master?
City's harbor.
Public works?
Eventually, any committee made up of lots of people. So I think we've got the right number in there then for the budget for now, until we learn more about. Does that make sense, you guys? Sounds like the right number in here for now, but this is obviously the first pass of capital.
Yep.
Okay. All right, so moving down to fire department. He's got fifty thousand in here, which would bring the balance up to two hundred and forty. One of the documents in there was a spreadsheet that, did Carol put that together? Or did she just contribute it to the spreadsheet that showed the long-term capital plan for fire department?
I don't know who created the spreadsheet or the details into it. This is the spreadsheet that I was referencing when I said that it had been shared with me in the last number of months, just kind of forwarded without any detail or explanation. I have not sat down or talked to Ralph about the details of that because when I have spoken in previous years about the budget, annual contribution of fifty thousand dollars in the reserve accounts to replace the tank truck that, excuse me, needs to be replaced was the only thing that I was aware of. So all of these, Ralph have mentioned to me several times that, you know, capital discussions and breakdowns similar to this have been created. And the time that I've been here, I have not seen it. And so I'm not familiar with this. And I did not add the suggested, you know, several hundred thousand dollars that, based on this document, is being recommended to put into reserve accounts on annual basis. But I will be speaking with him and Denise and Beth tomorrow about the overall fire department budget and?
And you'll talk about capital as well.
Yeah, and I'll definitely mention this.
And then we do, for the new folks, we do come around in, I think round two of capital discussions for major department requests. The fire department and rescue people would be here to talk about what we've got in here versus what they'd like to see in here and some justifications and all that kind of thing, right? We do that in round two?
There is a department discussion coming up, I believe it's at the beginning of March.
Is that expense or capital or will?
I don't know, it's small here.
Sorry. So this is a placeholder?
But yes, there will be, so the discussions that I'm having with a lot of departments tomorrow, it's really to get a more thorough detail of the overall department needs and what they're hoping will happen in the upcoming budget process. And then I take that information and I will write up a memo providing some basic detail about increases or decreases in the overall expense department and then any recommended dollar amount into capital and why. And so that, I believe, it's the first meeting in March that we have on a Saturday where we go into detail about departments and things like that. And that's where I would be prepared to have those details from that for that and that most for you.
So this fifty is kind of a placeholder at this point in time?
This fifty is the fifty that I've recommended the last three years or what, this is the fourth budget I've done, so based on that tank that needed to be replaced.
Do we know what condition the tank is in?
The tanker, yeah.
The language that I've always received from the fire department is it should have been replaced several years ago. And so when I first took this position, instead of down with Ralph, we agreed on, you know, fifty thousand dollars would take, I think it's according to my memory, six or seven years. And so this is year four putting that in. The challenge is, is when that tanker is replaced, it will be too big to fit in the current building. So you're putting money aside for a piece of equipment that will not fit in the existing building, as it says, so.
And the vehicle was built in nineteen eighty-two, so.
Oh, no. We saw that, yeah.
Okay. All right, other comments about fire department for now? Keep the fifty in there?
Yep.
Keep talking?
That might not be enough.
Building facilities, we had fifty put in last year. Suppose fifty putting in this year, which would bring us to a total of a hundred and forty-two thousand if we go forward with this additional fifty. Thoughts on that, Vika? This is creating a reserve for the new public safety building or?
So with this particular reserve account, what it covers is renovation and improvement to town-owned buildings to include town garage, sand shed, transfer station and public safety building. So it does cover kind of all of them, but the fifty thousand dollars has been going in there in the last couple of years, in line with the discussions that the facilities committee had with the work that they did around Port City in having money being set aside and working towards a long-term solution of, you know, having a new, a new building across the street and renovating over time the existing building into a town office and conference room or conference building.
Ten thousand.
Okay. Everybody good with that? All right, moving on. Town office, ten thousand dollars, which could bring us to twenty-nine. And the use of that would be?
This is specifically to town office expense. And this account was created and it has had ten thousand dollars going into it the last number of years specifically to building a new town office. And so this money is more specific to town's office-related expense and where money was pulled out of to do the renovation last winter. And so I did not touch or change anything because the town office will need. And this is, you know, I mean, ideally, you could probably combine both of those reserve accounts, but this is town office specific.
And the one we just talked about could in fact include new public safety building. Land acquisition and development, we put ten thousand in last year. Vika's got, proposed ten thousand in there this year. That if we do the ten thousand this year, that would bring us to just under forty-four thousand dollars. That's an opportunistic fund. Should land show up that the board would propose and then town meeting would vote on if we decided to try to buy a piece of land that came along for use for municipal purposes, parks, affordable housing, any of those kinds of things.
It is also for land use planning and site development.
Oh, okay.
And this is a couple of years ago, residents stood up and made a recommendation, a resident who doesn't often recommend to increase the budget, to put money in. And I believe it was last budget season, Carol reminded that that had happened the previous budget season. So she had recommended putting the money in this account when, based on what was heard from a taxpayer in a town meeting. And so I left it as it was. And there are, you know, a number of things that could be done. There are a lot of questions about Sunset and, you know, some other town properties. And so I think it's really for the, I don't have a recommendation one way or another. It's an account that definitely just kind of got left based on, based on what's been happening the last couple of years.
I think it would be prudent for us to continue to build up a fund that's opportunistic so that if an opportunity pops up, we're not scrambling trying to figure out how to take advantage of it. I'll leave it in there for now.
Yeah, forty-three won't go far with much acquisition. But if we can use it for other purposes related to land use, I think that would be good value.
Land use planning and site development. So last, last budget season, the language was changed to land acquisition, land use planning and site development.
Yeah, very good.
Okay. All right, moving on, solar array purchase. I think we now are at a point where what we have in the reserve in this upcoming fiscal year will cover the cost of buying out the rest of that contract or paying off that contract, is that correct, Vika?
Buying out is, yes, that is correct. It had gone to the climate action team for some research and now it's in the laps of the finance committee, which I need to provide them the information about that. There is some conversation relative to whether it's cost-effective to buy it out or just keep doing what's been happening and not physically owning and maintaining the costs of them. But that's once finance committee gets a chance to take a look at. Maybe leading towards, you know, the end of the budget season, we'd have a better idea. There is no money recommended to be put in or taken out at this point, but there is? There is no money recommended to be put in or taken out at this point, but there is money in there to cover the cost of it if the town were to purchase.
And is that because that the amount that's in there could possibly cover the purchase of it?
Yes.
But then there will be, need to be money for maintenance. So does that come into this budget or is it a?
So the way that this particular account is written right now is to purchase of the solar array.
Okay.
Maintenance is something that routine maintenance would typically go out of an annual expense account. And so, I mean, to this point, there hasn't been any maintenance.
So we'll need to know that as well when we're looking at the purchase of it, what will be the maintenance of it and what will be the value of the power generation and savings to the town?
That's, you know, that's.
That's what we will be able to do. Thank you.
So apparently it was done last year.
That's what I.
It was quite close to a, didn't really make any difference depending on whether you had a better use for the funds.
Gotcha.
So we'll look at it again.
Thank you.
Okay. So we're not putting any capital at this point into the budget because we think we already have enough to buy it out from a capital standpoint?
Last year, it was brought to the town's attention to purchase it out. The town did not have the funds at that point, but there was six or seven years of a, of a plan where money was being set aside annually with anticipation in 2024, 2025 as when it would be purchased. And so there is the money in there right now based on the original contract and agreement.
So I'm assuming it costs less now than a year ago?
Sure.
To buy the month?
Yes.
It costs less and less a year.
Yeah.
To buy it.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on, vehicles. Last year we.
Broadband?
Oops, sorry. Yep, broadband. So this is what we have in a reserve account. This is not what we bonded, is that correct?
Correct.
So what is this?
Bonded is debt. This is a reserve account for town ownership of infrastructure of broadband internet service on the island. I, in, in needed to connect with Mark Willett and then in, so in part of the select board wanting an update from all of the committees, I have reached out to all of the committees, I did connect with Michael and he said that they're going to have a broadband meeting to make sure that the whole committee is aware of this. But one of my questions prior to that, to broadband showing up, I believe it's going to be this first or second meeting in February. Right now, they're scheduled for the first, based on how agenda goes, it might get pushed to the second, in their presentation to have some recommendation about what and how the broadband reserve money would be reallocated. I know that Michael did have a suggestion one time of using these funds to cover the costs of the debt service with auditing. I don't think that that would be the most of, you're using town funds to cover town funds expenses. And so, yeah, we, we definitely need to figure out whether this money would need to be used for anything else broadband-related, which at this point, I don't envision that there's going to be any unexpected expenses that would come up, in which case I would recommend that this money would be reallocated to something else. But without having that more or less presentation from the broadband committee, I don't feel comfortable saying one way or another.
And I want to know why we're all paying for internet and we're not getting funding yet from?
I emailed, I have not heard back.
Well, that's very effective for them. It seems to me we're accumulating interest.
Well, I would propose that they are accumulating interest because.
But don't we?
Because I understood it as a citizen at the time, we bonded it to cover the capital cost, but we would get paid back by Acxiom. I would assume that would have included any cost of the bonding in addition to the actual.
But the longer you take to pay back, the more you're going to pay.
That would be them.
So the, no, the bond banks have been paid for. So we don't have any outstanding unpaid bond banks. That's at, when we go to town meeting and town meeting votes to cover the cost of those bond bank expenditures, that's a town expense. There is a separate agreement with Acxiom that states that they would be paying these things. And part of that agreement was until they start collecting the money, they didn't have the money to give back. Now that the money is clearly being collected, I don't have a good idea or plan. I believe, and I don't, it's been a number, a number of months, if not probably close to a year before I've even looked at that contract, but I believe it's like quarterly payments. David, you might have. Where we would be receiving that, that money from Acxiom, we have not received anything. And so I did send an email to Mark asking when the payments will begin, but what will be the plan to catch up? Because we have the current year, which has come into an end, and the previous year that the town has covered, we're not outstanding because to the bond bank, it's a town debt. They're not involved nor are they in any way participating.
Who do you say, Dave? Who do you mean?
Main municipal bond bank is who the town of Shebig Island took out the debt with.
Got it.
So they don't care how it gets paid for, the town of Shebig Island is responsible for it. A separate agreement was done with Acxiom saying that Acxiom will cover the cost and I believe it's, it would be quarterly payments. We have not received those payments yet. One time, a suggestion was made from a member of the broadband committee suggesting that we use the broadband reserve account to cover for that, but then you're just using, you're still using town money to pay town money. So why not use the expense account that's been allocated rather than pulling, you know, draining a reserve account? And so those are all the things that still are in the works that need to be figured out. I hope that more of these answers are clarified once broadband committee meets and they have, Michael, I'm assuming would be the person who will be doing the initial presentation. And then, I mean, I'm, I'm hoping that what will happen is a recommendation would be made to offset these funds into a different account, but I'm, I'm not certain at this point.
So.
That's, that's the intent. And the problem is not knowing exactly how many people were signing up and what the income would be and so forth and then coming up with the balance that's going to go back to the town. So that's, that's, that's the discussion that's going on.
Yeah. And I mean, it does make sense, I think, you know, from, from, from the perspective of the involvement that I've had, it's, you know, once we receive a bill from Acxiom, it's been very quick on, you know, we need this money to keep the project going. But there's, from, from me having to have reached out, there's no response and, you know, we're owed the money too, where is it? So.
The other thing is, I'm finding is, we're actually kind of unique in that other towns are, are paying the debt service on whatever they're having for, for internet service. We are paying the debt service, but then collecting from Acxiom, so it's another push. And other towns don't have that luxury. And, and since, since we're kind of new in this deal, we struck with Acxiom, those are the details that have to be worked out and a lot of that has to do with exactly how many people have signed up and what the income stream is.
I would take issue with that. I don't believe there was anything in the contract that conditioned their paying us back based on how many people signed up. I didn't.
No, 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 that's not in the contract.
Right. So they're paying back if five people signed up.
What we're talking about is the town is being made whole by the revenues from Acxiom. And the exact nature of that is what is, what is it?
Yeah. Well, I think just where it stands now, it's been a number of months that the town, that people from Shebig have been paying for their services. I mean, I've been signed up for three months.
And we're, we're still doing installations.
And we, as a town, should receive some form of revenue from them.
Agreed.
And we haven't. Not only about the debt that is currently owed for this year, but there's, there's still unpaid debt that according to the agreement, Acxiom is responsible for. And so.
That's right.
So you said we're going to have this on again, yeah?
So if you guys, if you are having a meeting with Acxiom or if anyone from, from, I mean, broadband, or if anybody from broadband has a better question I do with Mark Willett, that would be great because I did email him and I did not receive a response, trying to figure all this out, so.
And is it your responsibility or does it start with the broadband?
It is.
I think it really falls down on my responsibility. Broadband has a lot of, has, have had a lot of involvement.
Okay.
And I think maybe some members of the broadband committee have a, a better pull with connecting with Mark Willett than I have. My relationship with him has been very dry in terms of, you know, this is.
Let's leave it alone.
Yes.
Let those people move on.
Ultimately, it's spelled out in the contract.
Yes.
The details of the contract are what rule and before this goes on to a select board agenda, the contract will be one of the package items so that we can all study the contract in detail and memorize before we go into discussion.
Got it.
It would be great. But theoretically, that 51,000 should become available for use elsewhere in the capital budget in the not-too-distant future.
Okay.
Which that could, you know, that decision could be made very near towards the final budget process, you know, if you choose to, to do that. And that would be a special permission that the taxpayers would be asked to do.
Yep. Okay. Now, vehicles. We currently have $3,800 in the ending balance. We added 5,000 last year and we obviously spent some because we're still at 3,800 after adding nothing this year. So we just bought the new office car.
Town car, yeah. So the, the last number of years, $5,000 has been set aside in the chance that a new town vehicle was needed. The forerunner literally separated the base from the top, rusted out. We were able to find a really nice vehicle. It gets used several times a week by the office staff. It gets used by the code enforcement officer, on occasion, fire department borrows it. The last week or two, it has been used by the school department because their van died on them unexpectedly. They, their superintendent did reach out to me today and said that the school board was curious. They just spent $78,000 on a new school bus that could be driven without having to have a special license. And so they just spent a lot of money on that and now they're finding themselves in a position to having to purchase a new vehicle. Superintendent did ask if the town and the school on a more permanent basis shared that vehicle, but we have not as the town office, since the school borrowed it, has not had any access to it because the school teachers drive it to and from the boat with our code enforcement officer, you know, when GEI comes, it's just, it would, it would create a lot of, it just, I don't, I don't think it's really feasibly possible as much as the, the school needs a town vehicle, especially if the town were not to have a backup.
Right. So you didn't put any money in the capital budget for 2026 for vehicles because we just got a new one for the town?
We, I would not feel comfortable asking to put anything else in. There is a couple of thousand dollars in there, but the vehicle that we found is a great vehicle and I don't anticipate any major issues. If the town were to have a, you know, a town truck, that could be another backup for fire department and code enforcement officer and whatnot. But as far as town vehicles, I don't see a need for another one.
Right. Okay, so there's no money in the capital budget for that one. School will be working on what they need to do for their budget. Revaluation, never quite understood that account. That's there in case we need to pay taxes back to people?
Wait, so, nope. So the town needs to do a full town revaluation.
That's capital?
It's an expense, it's a very expensive process. The last time we got a quote, it was about $75,000, I think, that it would cost to hire a, people like an assessor who aren't qualified in it to do a full town revaluation where they would go through every property, make sure that what their assess part for land and building is properly done. We are, from what I've been told, a few years behind in this process. Our previous tax assessor was going to do this with her partner, who is our current tax assessor, I believe at this point, two years ago, maybe three years ago, but in significant skyrocket costs of houses, her recommendation was to postpone that until the market dropped down a little bit. The current tax assessors are interested in possibly being in the pool of doing this. They just needed to get their feet a little wet with being our tax assessors for a year to see if, if they wanted to take on that task. But that is what the money is there. There is currently what was kind of the quote-unquote anticipated costs would be at that point. At this point, no additional progress has been made in terms of that the current tax assessors are aware of what's in there because I had asked them, you know, based on your current information, do we have enough if we were to go out to bid? And they seemed to think, yeah, it's fine. So at this point, there's no recommendation to do anything with it, put any money in.
And the auditors think that that amount of money is a capital, I, I tend to think of capital items as things with wheels or things that are land or things that are building. This is a service. So the auditors are okay with this service being treated as a capital item?
They have not questioned it the last couple of years and it's periodic property revaluation work by the town assessor or outside contracted service, so.
And when do they, one of, one of those assessors have been a year anniversary of working for the town?
Springtime.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
And how long since the last reevaluation?
I have no idea, to be honest. I'm not sure. I would have to dig up that. I mean, it.
It's been more than five years.
Okay.
It's been well more than five years. I'm not sure. Was it done when Margaret was here?
Yes.
Maybe very early on in her.
I think state guidelines require that a reevaluation be done when your expected market and valuation is X percent higher than what you currently have in there. Isn't it driven by expected increase or?
Seventy-something percent.
Yeah. So it's not a time thing, it's a changes in market value thing, which we've clearly seen. Mark, you got something?
Very quickly, I think we all realize or, I hope, that when we do our next reevaluation, that tomorrow, the process of taxpayer reevaluation than it was last time.
Yep.
Yeah. Well, I'm not sure what problem was last time, but I know the current tax assessors are finding.
Issues.
Yeah. Some inconsistencies about things and are trying to, you know, make the proper correction and make sure that everyone is taxed and assessed.
And that was, that was the complaints that I would hear.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, wasn't the last change in assessment simply taking a, whatever year they did it in, take the current assessment, factor it up by some percentage and did that across the board? You know, I'm pretty sure that's.
It's a little more complex.
But darn close to.
They put these things into a black box and they take them up on their side and that's what we pay. But what we're talking about is a forward.
No, I understand.
But the last time.
They did some math.
They're, they're. They're, they're, they're called, I think they're referred to as statistical revaluations.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was talking about.
Um, but they, those are, those are cheaper. And, uh, they're doing them as an interim step to kind of keep things in line. But a, a full-blown revaluation seems to last us seven, eight, nine years.
Yeah.
But it's.
Okay, so getting back to the capital discussion, uh, we don't have any money added, because we think seventy-eight thousand is enough. So we can keep moving on that conversation. And Becca will let us know when the revaluation is ready to pull the trigger. Grant matching funds, we've already had a conversation about this earlier. Um, the proposal is to add thirty thousand in that bucket, which would get us up to ninety-two thousand. Some degree, that's as much of an investment as anything else, because it gives us the opportunity to apply for more grants. We just need to move forward and spend that money to make more money. Any suggestions or changes or comments?
It's good.
Okay. Paving, twenty-five thousand. When's the last time we actually did paving work? Has it been two years or three years?
Three.
At least three, yeah.
It's been three. And where's the schedule of paving projects?
The ten-year plan, we started in two thousand and ten, it's all done.
In terms of mileage, haven't we completed the first round of all the miles, except for a few?
No, there's, there's Chandler's Road, Warp Road, Chandler-Warp Road. It's the one that, oh, here.
Chandler's Warp Road just got done, but they stopped short of the warp. They just did that.
Yeah. Chandler, they got around that?
Chandler's, Old Cart, Henderson.
That's what they just did.
And there is another one.
That they just did.
Is it just this stretch?
Were done. And those roads need the chip seal on that.
Right.
The, to my knowledge, the only stretch that has not been repaved as the town in Big Island is the stretch here from the store up to the top.
Which we were holding on to, because of the questions about drainage.
Which the chip seal has been, to the roads that need to be done, has been held off, because the advice that was received was if we were to do that project, with the paving project, it would be more cost-effective, uh, for the town. Um, the town has been attempting to do, um, years long. I took it on and it's still not complete or successful. Uh, doing an easement agreement, uh, for a couple of property owners. So town has paid to get survey work done, um, to have some preliminary discussions and have easement agreements drafted up.
For drainage.
For drainage.
You said going anywhere?
Um, and so I, it would make sense to have that be done before the road gets paved, so then you're not pulling up new, uh, new road. Um, I, there is a new representative. Um, I was in contact with them right before the holidays. Long Island is doing some, um, work, I guess, coming up. And so I, um, we, uh, plan to reconnect, um, after the holidays, which I still haven't heard back from him. So I did have it on the list to reach out with him, um, next week, um, to see whether, if we're not able to do this one stretch, if we can at least do the chip seal and maybe piggyback with Long Island to try to work something out, just to complete the roads that, um, that need to be finished. So then there's no further damage or, you know.
And when you're.
Whatever happens to them if they're not properly sealed over a couple of years.
When you're talking about, like, Old Cart Road, is it just the section that has a little bit of paving? You're not talking about going down? Isn't that a dirt road?
No.
No.
It's a pavement.
If you go down there, it is paved until the town right lands.
Yep.
Couple of years ago, it was very, very crumbled. I mean, it was pretty much gravel. When it got repaved, but it needs a, um, chip sealing to go on it.
So the basic process is you repave, and then a couple of years later, you chip seal, which makes the repaving last much longer. It's an ongoing process.
Okay.
Herb's an expert, Mark's an expert.
Mark's an expert. Just to carry on. One, one thing about, one, the only, the only thing you guys probably need to really understand about the cost of repairing the road is that there's a curve that's, that's in our road plan and it's developed by the state. That, that looks like a, I don't know what that is, an arrow.
Belt curve?
No, it's not a belt curve. It, it goes like this and then goes down quickly. Maybe it goes up quickly. I guess if it's caused, it goes up quickly. So what happens is that roads, when they're in good shape, they don't have any cracks, they're shedding water properly, they're, you don't have to do any maintenance. And then as they start to deteriorate, you don't really have to do any maintenance. You can still drive on them, there's still a hole. But as, but that cost of deterioration is, is the cost of fixing it goes up a little bit. You have to do more to fix it.
Yeah.
So you want to keep the roads all at the top of the curve as, as well, without cracks and moist, moisture.
Yeah, yeah. So the roads that we see, like parts of South Road with the strips of.
Correct.
What is it called?
Oh, I'm sorry, I think you.
Correct, with the cracks that have been sealed.
That's just like a crack seal that's been put in there. And that's the part of the road that needs a full overheat.
That's the one that is starting to, okay, got it.
Yeah, that, that's a, that's, yeah.
It needs the chip seal or?
No, it needs to be repaved.
It needs to be repaved.
Needs to be paved with, with, uh, cobics.
And do we know, is there a schedule for that getting done?
We've been waiting until this drainage issue was reserved, so we could do.
Oh, that section is on.
Yeah, so from the.
Yeah.
No, it's also the commercial aspect of doing all the work at once to keep the overall cost.
But do we have a list of the, all the work that needs to be done? Is that?
So the only thing that needs to be done today to bring the paving process current for the four, there's four side roads. Like, if you go down to Henderson Road, you'll see that it's paved.
To a certain point.
But it needs the chip sealing on it. The, the whole road that needs to be repaved and have new pavement on it, more or less, is from about right here all the way to the top of the hill by, uh, the hotel.
Got it. Thank you. Now we get it.
Okay. So.
So the number that was thrown in here was, um, no, I, there was no reason for the physical number. It was more or less to really alarm you that there are conversations that I'm having to try to see if we can at least finish the, the roads that need the sealing on it and see what.
And then the necessary.
See, yeah, so, um.
Yep.
Yeah.
So that, that number may be enough to do what we wind up doing, or if we wind up doing more, it might not be enough money, but it's.
It doesn't seem like much to do all that paving. Am I right?
Mark?
Um, very quickly, if I may.
Yeah.
I would leave the twenty-five thousand proposed and I can now get ninety in there. Um, that's going to put you up to a hundred and fifteen.
Yep.
The last assumption we had was roughly a hundred and thirty thousand. No idea if that would hold up now with the new road form and individual coming down. I would panic on getting this strip surface. I know I've said that for three, four, five years now. The reason I've said that, that's the best road Trump has left us with.
Correct.
That's two or three layers, it's hot, it's actually, it's hot dog. But held up pretty well. Does need some tension with the passing and the cobics letting go. So I agree, I would bring the individual down here, whoever the new road form is. Have them look at it. I'm always available right around if you want me, and Herb, but right around. So I would put the twenty-five in there. I would go ahead and ask if it's going to be cost-effective or not to chip seal, Cap's Road, Chandler-Soul Road, Henderson Road, and Cap's Road. Without doing, and the reason I say that, it's mobilization companies that give really good expense.
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, and what, he did mention that Long Island is going to be doing some stuff. So if, if it's more cost-effective in some ways for us to kind of.
Yeah, so.
Work between both islands, it might be worth to get those out.
Well, I would, I would put the twenty-five in there and, and, and keep working. And I'll have some helpful or helpful comments, maybe along with Herb. About, uh, do some upkeep on the existing stuff that's been done. There's some cracks showing up, specifically right in front of the transfer station. If you want to look at those, those should probably be filled. Even as the new young road crew just gets their own filler and drives it out, that's, those are really big.
Yep.
They told us, really, you can buy that emulsion from them in five gallon buckets and, and chip seal, like, where, where stuff is lifted right out of the plow, it lifts the stuff up. You can re-chip seal that just by hand.
Yeah, it'd be a good thing for us to learn how to do it properly and then do it on an ongoing basis. It would save us money in the long haul, yeah. Okay. Yep.
Our, um, our road crew is going to, uh, class in the spring for gravel road repair.
Oh, nice. Great. After I get off. Fine.
After what?
I'm not going to grab a load. Moving on, uh, Public Works Equipment. Um, Becca's got fifty thousand in there, that would bring us up to sixty-six, almost sixty-seven thousand. Um, last year, we put in ten, the proposal's to put in fifty this year. Um, what, specific projects in mind for that, Becca?
So the fifty thousand dollars that's put in here is, um, it's just a estimate number at this point. But, um, in the fall, the, the gray pickup truck that used to be used, um, with the plow on it, um, lived its very long life. And that vehicle was, um, used as one of the three primary vehicles for plowing, the really small side roads. And then it was a, really a multi-use vehicle for Public Works. And then, um, at one point, for the fire department. And so, um, I'm recommending that the, um, Select Board support the town going and getting, um, a pickup truck that would have a plow on it that could be removed, um, or, um, put on, that then it could be used by the fire department when needed. It could be used by Public Works, um, and could be used to plow. The town did recently, uh, they're still on the town grounds, but, um, get rid of some of equipment that needed to be gotten rid of. Um, and there is one, um, truck that, I think due to bad recommendations over the years, um, was fixed, that is able to be used as the third vehicle for plowing right now. But that particular vehicle needs a special license. Um, and the three vehicles that we currently have, um, they're, they work good. Um, but it would be, um, more ideal to have a smaller vehicle that could do better in a lot of these side roads and be more of a multi-use vehicle, better on gas and things like that. Because they are using a larger vehicle right now to drive around the island to pick up trash and stuff like that. And it's just not as cost-effective as it could be.
Okay.
Is that vehicle that maybe should not have been repaired, but was, that we're getting by with, is it saleable? Could we sell that once we get a new pickup, if we buy a new pickup?
Um, I think at this point, I would hold off until we have a better, um, idea of how the new Public Works Department is working. Um, I, I think that that would be a great vehicle to potentially get rid of, especially if we have three good vehicles.
Yeah.
Um, but that would be something that I would almost wait to bring forth in a, in a future, future recommendation.
Okay.
Good.
All right, everybody good?
Yep.
Mark?
Very quickly, we, we just talked about the old red pickup truck with the green that they fixed up when Nicky Clark was working there.
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, I believe at some point you could put that up for auction and someone would buy that for it working. Uh, that pickup truck, that, that's a tough old truck and it's fixed up very well. So you probably would cover some of your money. And very quickly, you could buy a pickup truck for this plowing with, um, I would recommend leaning towards Tanner and chime in on that one or else. But I would lean towards the F-350 or the 3500 GMC instead of the F-250 or 2500. They're a little heavier duty, a little bigger, a little stronger.
I would not be doing the truck shopping. I would, um, I had Tom do the car shopping for the town vehicles. So he took the day off of work and spent the day in town with me. And I think between his knowledge of vehicles and then our Tanner, I would put a lot of faith into the current, um, you know, some of the current employees that we have to be able to make the progress.
No, it's not, it's a little harder.
We did get a recommendation from Nathan, too, in terms of, um, the type of a plow. And so he said that if the town were to move forward and do a truck purchase with the plow, having the plow, which I think you probably have, the, the ones that move, would, uh, be very cost-effective in terms of some of the smaller areas that, um, the town needs to plow, so.
All right. Um, moving on, recycling compactor. The proposed addition is fifty K, it would bring us up to sixty-five thousand, four hundred dollars. This is for a replacement?
So what I did is I put this, this in the wrong account. The recycling compactor is for, um, capital maintenance and replacement of town-owned compactors. I would recommend having, uh, ten thousand dollars in that. Not ten thousand dollars, I have, I'm all mixed up now. Um. Yeah, so what I would recommend is ten thousand dollars in that account to try to build it up, so then the town had some funds. And as far as the rest of it, forty thousand dollars, which I'm still, um, I don't have the final numbers, but it's part of the discussion that I was going to have with Jeff relative to solid waste. The, um, the, the place needs some pretty significant electrical upgrades. Um, and so, uh, we're hoping that in the next budget season, we can put a little bit, uh, money into, um, upgrading, um, the electrical work and making sure that it is safe in there. And so we did have some rough estimates that were provided to us. I threw in a number in there, um, with a little bit more that I believe was provided. I don't have my mouth in front of me, but.
So should we put that forty thousand?
That would be in the buildings.
If we, yeah, so.
Yeah, that would be.
Make public, uh, make, uh, recycling compactor ten, and then go back up to building facilities and change that fifty to a ninety? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
We have three compacters, is that right?
Yes.
So rewiring of transfer station.
Electrical.
And that will go under?
That was one of, one of the bigger things.
Yeah, we go into building.
Get under building facilities.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. E, so we've changed recycling compactor from fifty to ten. And we've changed building facilities from fifty to ninety. And that building facilities would now include an estimate of forty for rewiring of the transfer station, upgrading the wiring of the transfer station. Comments?
It's good.
Okay, moving on. I'm just going to hit the items that we are proposing to put more money into. Coastal Access Fund, adding ten thousand. Can you read the description for Coastal Access Fund, Becca?
East End purchases in capital structure, road path, construction and repair, facilitating public access to coastal waters and.
Yeah, so that would bring us up to thirty-one thousand there.
So Indian Point and?
No, that's private land.
Indian Point, um, is not, so the, the work that's going to take place to, uh, put in the four parallel parking spaces from the top of the hill, that is going to come out of the, um, storm damage repair and restoration account. The reason, because that account used to be Indian Island retainment, and it got changed.
Yep. And so this coastal access fund would be like repairs to, um, the public access down at Hamilton.
Hamilton, South Shore, not South Shore Drive, well, South Shore Drive has one.
Jan, all of those.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Jigs Road, I think that's going to be one that's probably, there's going to be some proposals for some maintenance, hopefully, in the near future.
Well, when we have our Island Fellow looking at that, will be well prepared to make some good decisions.
That's one of the goals that we're hoping if we get one, that they'll get focus on.
Yep.
Proper access.
And then the last item we're talking. And then the last item we're talking about adding, count 9195, storm damage repair and restoration. We have 79,000 in there at the end of this year. Last year we put 20 into it to build it up. This year we're proposing to put 75 into it. Dika, I assume part of that has to do with FEMA work in matching that kind of stuff or?
So, well, the big part more or less is the work that is going towards in the direction of South Shore Drive. So I, I don't know what the work is going to be, but South Shore Drive, we just signed a contract with GEI to be able to provide us with a visibility study. The goal is to have that information in the next two to four months. After that, there is going to be some decision for the board to make and possibly the town to make in terms of what the work would look like. This particular account, the number that I threw in there was not because I have any specific quotes. It was really a conversation to be on the bigger side, just to alarm and alert for the fact that I think there are some expenses that are going to be coming down the road in the next couple of years relative to the, this particular work. And so for this particular account, the language that was changed was. But the language was specific to storage damage and repair.
So this is for repairs, but we're also, you're also looking at FEMA or MIMA funding, is that correct?
So FEMA slash MIMA, it would be FEMA money, it would go through MIMA, MIMA will give us the money.
That's how, that's how I was wondering, okay.
Yeah.
And so that's in addition.
So there is any money that we receive from the federal government, there is an expected town contribution that will be a part of it. We do know that we have roughly about $800,000 that at this point FEMA has said that would be provided to the town based on the damages.
For all of them.
South, just South Shore Drive, that's just South Shore Drive. We haven't received, the other ones will be nothing close to numbers for that. I mean, 5,000 was one, 6,000 was another, so very small numbers.
And what if in fact it's determined when looking at all this, that the road needs to be moved?
That is a discussion that is not even something that would be possible to take on. Definitely not in fiscal year 26 budget discussion.
Got it.
That's a long term.
Very good, yeah.
Like a face two of the stone wharf type of a launcher everything.
Okay, Mark?
First of all, I think I've laid the line there for now, if you have proposed. Second of all, specifically East Shore Drive, my question is, do we have a route for East Shore Drive repair? And are there some very large purchase?
So from FEMA, we don't have information for that yet. We, the Select Board did authorize a $4,500 contract. We do have some materials that was purchased out of the regular expense account last year. There is about $2,500 of material that is still needed to be purchased, that is being done by the contractor. There is going to be some repair work that is going to be done. The contractor that is going to be doing the work has been waiting for our code enforcement officer to return from a two week vacation and speak to the code enforcement officer relative to permitting before starting any of that.
So there has been a bid and an award?
Thank you. Yeah, I'd be great to get that done. The only other account that I had a question on, because Cousins Island Parking Reserve is, that's not the, is that the joint?
No.
Agreement?
So this is one, I don't even see it on here.
It's account number 9198 at the bottom of the list. On the Machias.
So, oh, on the Machias ones? So this is a account that there was an agreement between CTC and Chabig for X amount of years for CTC to put $2,000 in, to pay the town $2,000. Based on the agreement, the money that they were up to like $25,000. So the money is in there now. As far as what the purpose of that money is, I have not read up, nor do I know those details. Anybody else?
I think it's in there for.
In the write-up, it says, MDOT approved capital maintenance of the parking lot and access road of Cousins Island. Didn't you do some research with Man D O T last year or tried to?
Well, we tried to get an answer, if I may, Bob.
Yes, please.
Tried to get an answer of whose responsibility it was to maintain the access. That was a simple question that we had and it came back as a gray area. Yarmouth didn't own it, D O T doesn't own it. They own the right way into, they own Eastman.
Yes.
Parking lot, but D O T thinks they're not responsible.
I wonder if it's the plaza.
Well, CTC plaza.
The road itself, they don't.
Kind of Cumberland paid it originally, that's right, Cumberland paid it.
And then a neighborhood was built up and now the road is used jointly by a neighborhood. So in addition to that, I believe there was recent correspondence from the D O T relative to the any true capital improvements at Cousins Lot relative to sea level rise. They look, they referred back to the contract, which says that's on us. And then D O T said that we'd be willing to pay half of it.
Up to like $800,000. It was below, they would back, they would pay for 50% of it up to right about under a million dollars. I think it's 800 or 750 something within that.
Yeah.
Right?
Yep.
But then this, this particular account is an agreement between CTC and the town. So this money is specifically something that CTC has put in $2,000 or has sent annually a check for $2,000.
Yeah. Maybe somebody who's on the board of CTC could find out what they think that's going to be.
Well, they're a little sketchy. So, and I, I know I'm.
Move over here.
I know I'm just inviting myself, but I'm still hoping to get included, if I may.
You will be, yeah.
With Yarmouth and D O T at some point.
And that's where we are with that currently. We took a false start at a joint standing committee meeting. Realized to the last minute, thanks to Carol, that we should have had a much more detailed plan for the meeting. I think by that point in time, I had a conversation with Scott LaFlamme about us taking more of a role in looking at both the pier and the parking lot.
Carol, go.
But there's now, we're preparing, an attorney is preparing a draft of an MOU that would kind of lay out the manner in which we would take more responsibility for designing improvements to both of those assets, if you will. Based on the fact that the work that's been done so far did not include the concept of sea level rise. It was focused on maximizing the longevity of the asset. But as we all know, sea level rise had an impact there last winter. And waiting another 30 years to think about how high that should be probably isn't in our best interest. Yeah, that's, I just got back, but I didn't see any of my inbox from the attorney about that draft agreement. Probably going to see something in the next couple of days that we're getting.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Bob, if you mind, if I made a general budgeting opinion statement for.
Go for it.
As you guys already know, when you get done, when you get late into your budget process, you can start to tell whether the budget is going to go up, so you can propose a town meeting. At that point, you have a decision to make. And that's what use or not of an designated fund balance, asking the taxpayers. We've done that historically for years. We started out asking for about 75,000. Last year we asked for a quarter of a million dollars. My point being, it's an option. I, I personally never budgeted that way mentally thinking, oh, we'll just add more, knowing we can ask for money. But it's an option that the taxpayers don't seem to mind, you know, a lot, in my opinion. And what, as long as you can show them, effectively the capital budget, if you can show the taxpayer, in my opinion, that you're really trying to move things forward in the town and plan for stuff instead of not planning and then all of a sudden go to be up to borrow more money, then they will allow you to take some fund of the.
In addition to that, there are guidelines at the state level as to how much you need to have in undesignated fund balance, a minimum and a maximum. And then in addition to that recommendation from the state, the town has a policy that I believe is a narrower band than the state's policy. Do you remember that, you heard?
16 or 25.
16 or 25, I think, I think the state only has a minimum.
Oh, okay.
They don't have a maximum. We decided to put a maximum in as some other places do, because if you go above that maximum, reserve that money, it really means you're over budgeting and you're just putting money into a flush fund and that's not perfectly discussed.
So that, as we get toward the end of the budgeting process, one of our goals will be with what we're proposing, what's the impact on the taxpayers? And that's a hard number to get at, but the closer we get to the end of the process, the closer we can hone in on that number. And then we have to make some strategic decisions based on what we need to do for expense and based on what we think we need to do for capital, what we think we need to do for expense and what we think we need to do for capital. Can we keep taxes roughly flat? Or do we need, do we propose that we need to raise taxes? That comes further down the road after, because magic and the auditors and the assessors and revenue numbers and all that other stuff comes together. So for now, Dika, are you okay with where we've gotten to with the capital discussion at this point?
Yes.
Is the board okay with where we are with this draft, with the few changes we made tonight? Okay.
Yep.
Alright, comments? Yes, John?
So the Cousins Island Wharf, do we make an annual payment into a fund?
We do.
Yes.
And where's that?
It is on a.
Yeah, right, but where do we dock, in our budget, where does that, what's that one?
9180.
There. No, no, no.
Cousins Island Park.
No, so the reserve account, the Cousins Islands, that is a reserve account that was set up between CTC and Chabig, where CTC has annually put $2,000 into that account, up to $25,000. That agreement itself, I don't really know the details of, once that $25,000 is capped, then what? The, what you're talking about is the money the town of Chabig pays to Yarmouth, the reserve account that Yarmouth holds for the capital maintenance and improvement. That is, we have an agreement with them and it is drafted up and annually we put certain amount of money on it based on the agreement. It is on page 15 of the entire budget. It's Department 4400 miscellaneous mainland, annual payment to Yarmouth for its Cousins Island repair reserve. There is roughly about $800,000 and change in that account right now. Chabig pays 8%, Yarmouth pays 20%. We put annually a number based on what's in the agreement. So year to, fiscal year 25 was 24, 853. Fiscal year 26 is 25, 847.
Those numbers were.
It goes up 4%.
Yeah, so now my question relative to that is there's some study, has been done and will be done, engineering study on the Cousins Island Wharf. So that could potentially, we don't know what's, that was, it's going to cost to address sea level rise there and make that a sustainable facility long term, right?
Correct, so.
But we have those numbers.
No.
Well, there's a reserve, we don't know, if it's a quarter of a dollar project.
So we have an engineering study that talks about the cost of approach one, two, three and four, different numbers for each, that would maximize the longevity of the asset. There are a few pieces of the asset that are more broken than the rest of it. What we're proposing, what we'll propose to Yarmouth when we go to the next joint standing committee meeting, is that we change, add to the focus of that engineering study and roll in a concept of sea level rise and storm severity. And B, possibly roll in the concept of the 80 foot ramp over there from an ADA standpoint, which requires another dolphin, which provides the opportunity for more boat tie up space. Yarmouth has expressed interest in that change, also adding a drop off and go back kind of space for Chabigers, so that we're not always using theirs, because that, that other float is theirs. So that could all get wrapped in there. One thing we try to guard against is when we, let's say we agree with Yarmouth sometime in January or February, that we want to engage in that engineering study to expand the current engineering study. And the expanded engineering study would include those things that is listed. It's really easy to look at that 800,000 and say, well, that's, that's where we get our money from the engineering study. But we seem to have been having some success getting grants for the engineering studies. And so far, there still seems to be some money out there for those kind of studies. So we should always, in my opinion, look first to grants for that study. The study would then tell us how much it's going to cost to make these improvements. If it's $5 million and we've got a million or so in the bank. And if Yarmouth agrees with us that we should spend that 800,000, whatever it is, that million, that's part of the funding then for that project. But the rest of the funding, we would hopefully find grants through D O T, through shipping harbors, through CDS or whatever. So that's, that's the basic process.
So the finance committee is conceptually talking about part of the capital plan ought to be a document of all the future major and projects.
Yep.
And so that anybody in the town could look at it and say, oh, I didn't know that about South Shore Drive. I didn't know that about where the stone pier is. So that to me is something that we document in that capital plan.
And prioritize and what is the appetite for bonding and all those things. The priorities would be coming from the session that the Select Board had and the survey that the town did, talking about what's important to everybody. And certainly the capital committee is going to be delving into things deeply enough that you might have other ideas about priorities and we should certainly talk about those. Alright, that a wrap?
Thank you, finance committee. Looking forward to that piece of information. That's a lot.